Good evening. This is Tuesday, May 25th, 2021, meeting the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, anything you intend to or not screen share on your computer. This is being recorded, so it will wind up in prosperity forever and ever and ever. This is Tom Sanford Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm all members' impressions anticipated on the agenda. I can hear me pride's policy meeting to order. It's Dennis.
Yep.
Hi Dennis. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Tom Sanford here. Janet Campbell is here by proxy? Nope.
So close.
Anticipated.
There she is.
Janet is of Janet, can you hear us? Janet, can you hear us? No. Can you hear us?
What?
Okay, okay, cool.
I'm not on with my sign on. I'm on with Dennis's again.
No, huh. I emailed you the link too.
But it didn't come through.
It didn't? I must have the wrong. He must have given me the wrong email address.
Would I do that?
Not you, he. I emailed him.
Yeah.
Cause I I misplaced it. Actually, I either copied it down wrong or something because it didn't go through for me. All right, with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at 7:40 PM Tuesday, May 25th, 2021. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board and is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive orders of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. Specific information and the general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's order suspends and the requirement for the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes the links for the general public to join the meeting. Meeting ground rules. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they've concluded their remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide comments, questions, penetrating insights and or motions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your mic or your telephone when you're not speaking. Please speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you yielded the floor to state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with one another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. So the we had a couple of things on the agenda. It's not super heavy, but we got a couple of things, but first of all, we have a few minutes before the first item, which is the A and R on Marble Road. We have a bill for hearing, the hearing for the articles that we have that we placed in the telegram. The amount is $403.84. So can I entertain a motion that we will pay this to Gatehouse, New England?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none, I will ask. Cat doesn't like it. That's the price of progress kitty cat. All right. All right, let's start with Carolyn McDonald.
Hi.
Janet Campbell.
Hi.
All right.
Hi.
All right, Tom Sanford, I voted unanimous to pay Gatehouse media. Thank you all. Ran through a couple of the other things. There's not, you know, it's notices and stuff like that in our mailbox. And then there's, I guess there was the decision on the Capes of Berlin. I didn't get a chance to read it all through, but we haven't noticed that there was some. So. And 7:43. Is there anything else that anybody needs to chat about real quick before we have our first item? No. I can't hear you muted. Janet, you're muted.
There you go.
There you go.
When are we going to return to regular meetings?
Um, well, we don't know because the governor is fooling around with extending this through September. He was announcing that today. He's got legislation before the the State House to keep on, keep the for municipalities that can keep on doing this.
So that we can or that we must?
It it's part of an extent. I don't know how it's going to be written. What I was listening to on the news, they were saying it would be an extenuate extension of the orders that he's got in place. So this will be for municipalities. He had done another one for housing and then something else for restaurants for outside dining. So the plan, the open meetings would be through September, I think, like 21st. And then outside dining through November and the housing through December.
Wear your coats.
Yeah. Right, exactly. So just before then, they have to take it up because it sunsets on the 15th of June, I think.
Okay.
So. TBD.
Yeah.
But I think they'll probably move pretty quick with it.
Sure. I mean, they'll have to. If if they want it to not run out, they're going to have to.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but it's not a money thing, so I don't think there'd be much debate.
Right.
You know, but who knows? They could get bogged down. Somebody could put an amendment on it that's not popular and then all of a sudden everything goes to hell.
Right.
So.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll just be interesting if the can versus must.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think that they would probably, no, I don't know. I was going to say they probably would not leave it up to every municipality because then you'd have a ad hoc and some people do it and some people don't. And for the general public, you might be confused. And if you do try and do business in one town, it's different than another town. So I would think it'd be all of a nothing, but I don't know.
Yeah.
We'll see.
Where's Tim? Is he in here tonight?
Tim's here. He's just incognito. He's.
He didn't have his hair done, right?
Or maybe he didn't. It didn't come out well.
He's got that darn King hair going. There you go. Albert Einstein system.
Yeah, there you go.
Um, is Seth in the audience?
Seth is here as well as David Yildiz.
Okay.
So there's Seth.
They are on the agenda for now. So could you promote them, please?
Indeed.
Thank you.
Oh, nope. No hairdo Janet.
No.
Good evening.
Hi Seth, how are you?
I'm great. Thank you for having us board members. I know this one was on a little bit of short notice.
Yeah, it was, but I'm very grateful that you gave me a blank check because I put a nice healthy deposit down on my new yacht.
That that would be my client, so I hope you take it off on your first sale.
I didn't vote today.
It was yesterday. All right, Seth, you're on, you're up. So could you give us, do you have a plan that you can share with the with the?
Yeah, let me start my screen sharing here.
Please, and go over what we're doing.
Okay, hopefully you can see my screen.
We can. I can.
So I'm going to zoom in on the locust map. This is an approval not required plan for the reconfiguration of parcel 95 and parcel 96. So roughly, well, as it shows here, 5.24 acres and 1.78 acres. Parcel 95 contains the existing house for five marble road. And this area of town is, I call it just south of the sharp bend where Gates Pond Road takes off. We did a survey of the property with the intent of reconfiguring the lot lines around the existing dwelling. This, this is vacant land surrounding it. And the intent is to make lot one and lot two, which are both conforming to the minimum frontage and area requirements for a standard lot. And then there's a remaining parcel D, which is labeled not a building lot. That does not have enough area at this time to be an additional building lot. As we've shown with the existing dwelling, the existing well meets all of the applicable setbacks to any of the new lot lines and existing lot lines. And the existing dwelling has both a primary and a reserve leaching area, which would make it eligible to have its lot lines reconfigured. So other than that, if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
So is the intent to have the existing driveway moved so the frontage will be on the?
We have shown it within an access easement. Yeah, so this is similar. My office recently did one on Car Road. That was the same thing. It was an existing driveway that was over onto a parcel that we cut off of it. They would have the capability to move it. There's no topography constraints or anything like that. From our end, it would be ideal to be able to leave it though.
Would it? Why is it ideal to leave it?
Well, they have, they have an existing driveway already. So rather than rip up an existing driveway and relocate it to make this happen, they can use the one that they have and the access easement will give them rights to pass over continually.
So when Greystone develops this in the future, they've got the access easement. So they're just going to have to figure out how to put their driveway in someplace close or whatever.
Well, they have over, yeah, they have seven, roughly 75 feet of frontage to work with there. And if it wasn't issue, they could certainly make an agreement to relocate it then.
I'm just trying to see, you know, foretell a application for a common drive or something like that in the future.
Uh, there's, there's no interest in an application for a common driveway. There's sufficient area for each lot to have its own access.
The sightlines on the new driveway might get a little hairy with that corner because it does go downhill right there.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have jurisdiction over driveways and driveway easements. It's just a conversation we can have. So we've had it.
There is an audience member with their hand up. Tim, Tom, when you're ready.
Seth, are you, are you done with your remarks?
As long as the board doesn't need anything additional from me, I I'm here to answer any questions.
Um, I believe I linked that really quickly earlier. I think there was enough furniture and enough acreage on both pieces, so.
That's correct. They're both in excess of the required frontage and then lot, the existing dwelling on lot, lot two, we're calling it, has over 80,000 square feet of land area. And then the lot one is much bigger than that.
Right. Right. So lot D right now is just a appendage on lot one.
I it would just be a, it's a non-building lot that would just.
Is it carved off? So in other words, I'm looking at you. Is the application for three lots or is the application for two lots?
Um, I I think as far as your fee goes, I would call it three lots because we've made an additional lot.
Right.
Of parcel D.
And the reason you're moving forward with the creation of that lot rather than leaving it as part of one of the other two, what's the benefit there?
Uh, we're here now, so the applicant could move forward with constructing a dwelling on lot one. And parcel D could be developed years down the road. It it wouldn't be, he could convey lot one separately as it's a conforming building lot. We've cited a septic system location on that lot. So it's ready to go after A and R is endorsed that it could go into a building permit process. Whereas parcel D is not at that point yet.
Well, D, D would have to acquire additional acreage from an adjoining parcel. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, correct. So lot one could be conveyed and the applicant could hold on to parcel D for time down the road when they they could acquire that land, if they could acquire that land.
The frontage on that piece is miniscule, right?
Yeah, it's 85 feet.
Yeah.
Five plus parcel C would make it over 100 feet, 101 feet.
So parcel C is not going to be part of lot two. It's going to be part of parcel D.
Correct. So I'll show you the, well, they're separate. Let me share my screen again.
Okay, because I saw a heavy line. I assumed it was with lot two.
So the plan actually has a table on it. So it's showing lot two is the existing assessor map 17 parcel 95 minus parcel A, which is this piece here, plus parcel B, which is a large piece of land that's to be combined to it to allow it to be a conforming lot and minus parcel C, which is a tiny wedge.
Can you, can you move your screen over to the left a little bit? Yeah, okay. Oh, I see that. All right. See, I got confused with the heavy line that was was there. It was part of that lot.
The heavy line is the existing lot line.
Existing lot lines, yeah. Got it.
Wait, so C, C isn't attached to D. C is an independent parcel.
C and D are separate right now.
So C is going to remain separate. D is going to remain separate. All right.
Well, Tim's looking something up. Is there an audience member that's still, is there a hand up?
The hand has gone down. Una Murphy, did you still want to ask a question? Put your hand up if you do, please. Okay, yep, so. All right, so Una, you need to unmute your mic. There you go.
Sorry about that. This is Steve Murphy. I represent David Yildiz and Angela. I don't have anything. I'm actually on my wife's computer because something's wrong with my computer.
Okay.
So, so, yeah, so David and Angela have entered into an agreement to sell their parcel of land at on Berlin Road. But this is to, you know, accommodate the budding parcels. But we are under agreement to sell as is.
Immuded, Tim.
I'd like this. I'd like to see the plan again. I'm I'm looking at adjacent parcels, trying to figure out what the benefit is of having C and.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wheeler. What's the question?
So the new lot two has a house on it. Independent, saleable. The new lot. Is it one that's?
One, yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
New lot one has the required frontage and how many square feet?
It has 180,000 and change. It 80,000 is the minimum, so it's it's oversized just due to the boundary of the existing vacant land.
Yeah, okay.
You okay, Tim?
Yeah. Trying to figure out whether I would configure everything this way, but that doesn't, that's not up to me, you know? We're seeing a plan. It shows a non-buildable lot, two buildable lots. They conform and I move that we approve a plan. And Seth, you can give us the specifics so it's recorded. I can't, I can't pick up dates and all that stuff, book and page and all that. So it's Dillison Roy for Greystone Construction dated May 13th, 2021. Book and page is somewhere over on the left there.
So there's some backing deeds referenced in there as well, but it's it's a A and R plan for assessors map 17 parcel 95 and assessors map 17 parcel 96.
That sounds good to me and we're creating lots one, two, and C and D. C and D not to be considered building lots. Approval under the subdivision control are not required. That's it for me.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion by the board? Any questions, comments, or anything else?
I know my client is anxious to get the Mylar. Is there anticipated date that that would be signed?
As soon as I run it all around, I gotta run it all around to all of the rest of the board members. Thursday would be the quickest I could do it. So it could be back to the town Thursday night and you could pick it up on Friday.
Okay, I'll let my client know that and he is town hall open to the general public now. Is an appointment needed?
It's open now.
That's nice to hear. So I will let him know.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. And nobody from the general public, no comments, questions? Okay. And I will call for a vote. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Janet Campbell.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So I will, I'll fill in the rest of the, Seth, I'll fill in the rest of the Form A and write the check out. I believe, what's our fee schedule? Thank you.
I apologize. Every time I calculate the fee, I get it wrong.
That's okay.
I told them.
Application, $50 for the first lot and 25 for additional lot, every each additional lot. So it's going to be for 100 bucks.
Right.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Plus my deposit, my yacht.
Yeah, I hope it's a nice one.
Yeah, it is. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Oh, he's, you might as well stick around, Seth.
Yeah, don't go too.
Don't go too far. We have a continuation of the discussion on the bomb property, but we're a couple of minutes early.
Yes, sir. I was, I was going to mute myself in case you and hide myself in case you guys needed to do anything. But I'll be here waiting in the.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Gatehouse media, we're done. So it looked like they approved it, huh? The Capes of Berlin.
Yes.
Is that what it says?
Yeah, they signed it. Wow. It was 21 continuations on it.
Wow.
Wow. In addition to the plan that everybody's going to have to sign, I will, I'm going to ask you also to sign the, this is from the Worcester County Registry of Deeds and they just want to who's required, who's a member, member signature and who's appointed to sign plans and stuff like that, so. Put that in with the pile of stuff that needs to be signed.
Excellent.
We got a few more minutes before we, because I put him on at 8:15. I wasn't sure whether this was going to have some issues with that plan or not. So we gave them us a little bit of time to deal with it. So, um, what are we going to do about the configuration of the board for next year?
As far as.
Well.
Who is, I nominate you to be chair.
Second.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Swap stuff around or what do we want to do? I know you just kept putting Ron back because he liked it and no one wanted to step forward, so. Do we want to rotate or do we want to continue to keep going? I don't care, truthfully.
I know I'm not going to do it. I'm far too green still.
And I'm too old.
Okay, so that that's less and less people. Jay's not here, so we can nominate him.
Oh, we could, but then you're back to taking minutes.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
Well, we haven't seen any in a long time, so perhaps. A line. I don't care. If we, if we want to stay with status quo, we can stay with the status quo.
Yeah, as long as you're happy with it. I don't see any reason to change it.
As long as you can put up with telling you I'm going to get the mail and then not do it.
If that's the worst thing you do as chair.
I was late tonight. I ran down right after supper. I didn't get the mail.
But soon that won't be relevant anyway.
True.
Yes.
Soon.
So what's the meeting schedule for the summer? Is it June, July and August or just July and August?
See you in September.
Usually have one meeting in July, one meeting in September. If we don't have a heavy June, we can opt. Usually have one meeting in July, one meeting in September, if we don't have a heavy June, we can opt not to have the second meeting in June.
Okay. But we in.
And what about August?
Yeah, I was gonna say you skipped August.
No, I said one in, oh, did I say, I I meant to say one in July, one in August. And then we.
Okay.
September.
Two in September, yeah.
Okay.
We only have one.
Two. Two in October, depending on what Thanksgiving is, we either one or two.
Yep, usually one in November, one in December.
Correct.
Right.
Get away with it.
Awesome.
What's the requirement for? Stepping down, what age requirement do we have?
There's no age requirement. Charlie didn't, went as long as until he couldn't hear everybody, when he said screw it, I can't hear anybody. I think I have his number on here, I have his resignation. Oh, I know what thing we one thing we need to chat about, now that we, the CDC has said we can go around kissing everybody. Can we plan a little gathering for Ron? Because we're gonna do it and we postponed it because of the pandemic. So is that something that we can think about and put in our little address books?
What are you doing?
Going out to dinner and taking Ron.
Having a retirement thing.
Little.
He has the most money, he's taking us.
That's fine by us. We'll figure it out, but I I think it would be, you know, at least a nice little token, we said we were gonna do it and then the pandemic hit and now.
I asked that you don't go to Steakhouse House or something.
To go where?
To a steakhouse.
Okay, where you how about you make the suggestion, where would you like to go?
I don't care, as long as I can get something to eat.
Okay. Okay.
Hey, vegetarian?
Yep.
Okay.
Forty two years.
Wow, good for you.
Cool.
What's your favorite place to go?
Dippie Bavon, but they went out of business.
Yeah. What's your new favorite place to go?
Haven't been. Probably checkerboards, because I can always get something there.
Go there, what about is, what's the place, it used to be fishing Marlboro, I don't know if it's still fish.
I think it is still fish.
Are they still open?
Where is it?
As far as I know, yeah.
On corner of South Street and Route eighty five. Marlboro.
Oh, oh, oh. Well, if they have something vegetarian, I'll go. I don't eat fish, no, I don't eat fish.
Nothing with a face?
Nothing with a face. Okay.
Right, I'll find I'll find some place.
I think one ten girl I can get.
Oh, that's true.
A vegetarian.
We could do that and sit out in the little patio.
Oh, very nice.
Bring an umbrella.
And support an in-town business.
And support an in-town business.
Okay.
Excellent.
Talk about that, all right.
All right.
I like that.
And they make a tasty adult beverage, so.
They do that.
I don't do that.
No.
I'm nuts enough the way I am. What are we waiting for?
I have to, we had a, was it a continuation or not?
It was a continuation.
Was it a continuation, okay, then we have to wait. We have to wait another three minutes.
Okay.
I'm just doing the bill. What the hell's our account?
Want to meet on Thursday?
That's my phone, yeah.
Let me see, Thursday, I should breeze in town probably a little bit after five, maybe five fifteen.
Up at the town offices.
Huh?
Up at the town offices.
You tell me.
I just assumed do it that way.
Okay, you wanna go to the town offices?
Well, why not? You only have to make one stop if we all meet there.
That's fine, if you want to, I usually run around, but I don't I don't care. Yeah, you wanna, what time, Carol, are you available on on Thursday afternoon?
I am.
Mr. Wheeler, can you drive your tractor up to the town hall? Five fifteenish?
Five fifteen, town offices.
Yes, please.
On Thursday. Might be helpful if you sometime Thursday send a reminder email.
I can do that.
That would be awesome.
Pretend you're you miss.
I may remember, I may not. Now that we can all hang out.
Yep. Perfect. Okay.
All right.
It is eight fifteen, so we will. Open the, we'll continue the hearing that we had from. Last meeting. Eleventh, that sounds great. On the bomb property. So when we last left our hero, Seth was enlightening us with the changes that we made up on the parcel, so we changed the parcels, the name of the road to Amos Wheeler.
That's correct.
Amos Wheeler Road, and you had noted or added a note about the, if we discover any other additional piping, that you will address it?
We have, and and we added a detail to the relevant plan sheet to make that a little bit more robust.
Okay.
Find what exactly is going on there, and that was in response to the neighbor's desire to have a way to clean it out. Should anything ever happen to the pipe, so we've noted that if the pipe is then kind of, well, first, the pipe that the neighbor has. Alleged that is in a low point, we've defined that we're going to gingerly excavate in that area. And then we're gonna replace the entire length of it to ten feet of either side of the roadway surface, so that there'll be a new. ADSN twelve pipe, which is the standard drainage pipe. And then on either side of that replacement, there's also going to be a cleanup to grade, so should anything ever happen with that. Portion of pipe, there'd be the capability to clean it on either side. And so I can share my screen and show that area if that's all right?
Yes, please.
So we had originally identified a broken pipe that we had sent the board some pictures of in this area, if you can see the hand cursor.
Right.
And now we're calling out for a secondary replacement in this area, which is an existing low point. And we discussed that past meetings that the road is actually entirely in fill on this section, so even if we weren't replacing the pipe. We'd actually be putting more material on top of it and protecting it further, but before we do that, we are going to replace it with a newer, stronger pipe. And connect it to the existing pipe, assuming it's there, we've added notes on the bottom right of our plan. And that is relevant to replacing both the existing exposed pipe, which is the one we spoke about at the beginning of last meeting. And then we also added notes to excavate the existing low point to hopefully expose that pipe. And then replace it where we've shown a detail that shows how we intend to connect it and then also provide provisions for a clean out on it.
And the proposed clean out that you've drawn here is a standard that the town will accept?
So to my knowledge, the the town does not have a standard detail for a clean out, so this actually came from Framingham, so a more urban place. And it has a full meter box cap on it, so a lot of times when we say clean out, a lot of people think of a just a plastic PVC pipe.
Right.
Stubbed up to grade, this is actually the the clean out portion of it is slightly below grade, and then there's a protective box around it that sits at grade or slightly above it. So you would open the box and then you would unscrew the clean out to have access to this.
Okay, because when you had first said clean out, that's what I had thought you were gonna do, a pipe stubbed off.
No, I I I hope this is a, well, it's not an urban environment that this is going in, the the application came from an urban environment where there could be traffic and different things over it. So the these clean outs, again, they'll be they'll be in the earth and slopes on the side to to grade, they're not within the traveled surface of this roadway.
Okay. There were a couple of questions that were emailed earlier, and I attempted to answer them, I CC'd the board members. So two of the questions that were asked and I answered them and I'll share it with you, Seth. One of them was is that existing. Equipment that's parked there now will be. You know, relocated when you put the roadway in, and I thought that that was. A given, you're gonna have to anyways, you can't put the road around that. That's one, and then the second one was is that new wells that would be drilled in the two new created lots. Will conform to the current setbacks that the town has in place, there won't be any grandfather, there won't be any moving closer to any roadways or anything like that. I answered that that it's really not this board's purview, it's more border health, but they would have to locate any. Wells, septic, anything like that, in setbacks that are current regulations, they're not gonna have anything that's gonna be deviating from that.
That is correct, as there are new lots that are being built upon, in my experience, the border health would not grant a waiver or variance, so we would anticipate, we plan to be in full conformance with their regulations for both wells and septic systems.
Okay. Tim, did you have a chance to talk to Highway? You're muted.
How unfortunate.
How unfortunate.
So the the grade. What are we, we got quite a drop from Highland to the. Area where the pipe is, we're talking about what, five or six feet of fill? Is that what you were proposing, Seth?
In round numbers, so I I'm looking at the profile plan on my screen, I can certainly put that up where it shows the comparison to existing and proposed. So Highland Street is where my cursor is. We have a very small rise, this double thick line is our proposed drainage system, which is essentially following existing grade, with the exception of a small cut at the beginning. And then our proposed roadway is shown right here, so we're going down at four and a half percent. Leveling off and then we start going up the hill that's behind Mr. Baum's existing equipment in that area, and we're going up at a five percent grade.
And remind me what our specs in our subdivision control. Require as a. Figure for grade.
So minimum, I believe, is half a percent. With the exception of the alignment with the existing road, and you'll have to forgive me, I don't know the exact number, but we're showing two percent and standard through many subdivision. Rules and regulations in a lot of towns is there's a set distance where it has to be a certain grade so that you have control of the intersection.
Right.
Then after that, your minimum grade is zero point five percent with a maximum grade for a minor road in Berlin is ten percent.
Okay.
So we're well, we're over the minimum and we're well under our our maximum, essentially fifty percent of what would be allowed.
Good. On the opposite side of Highland, there's currently a a. Catch basin. And that catch basin has a pipe that seems to extend. Under the road into the property, is that? Pipe that's broken, running alongside the current farm road? Related to that catch basin?
To our knowledge, it is not, so that is a. Roughly a northerly running direction, if the pipe were to go across Highland Street. The broken pipe is would be in the vicinity of where that would be, the broken pipe that I saw, I was actually the one that went out and. Mr. Baum showed me where it was and we dug up what we could of it, it was not a very large diameter pipe and it was close to the surface. So it doesn't seem likely that that would be a catch basin, although I have no, it's a clay pipe, so it's very old.
That's a clay pipe, okay.
Yes, and and we're calling for the replacement of that as well, so if it is indeed that, it would be replaced in kind to maintain its functionality as well.
So, but we don't know what what function it serves then, right now?
It seems to be non-functional from what I saw on it, but.
And and so the 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 line that's leading out of the catch basin on the opposite side of Highland. Seems to be heading toward Duncan's property. The the issue, I guess, is we, I think the highway department would like to. See that if that's the case, if it comes under the road, connected into your drainage. So it continues to function.
Well, connecting into our drainage basin would be problematic in that i- if we were to convey. I'm not gonna say it's the entirety of Highland Highland Street, but it's it's a much larger area than what our drainage system is designed to mitigate. So it certainly could handle more water and there's an overflow that if it were to get a huge surge, it would do that, but that would defeat some of the protections that are in that. I I think the better solution, and I I'm sure the applicant would be agreeable, that if any pipes are encountered during the construction of this roadway. They'd be replaced in kind, similar to what we proposed at the expected crossing location, and that would allow them to exist to wherever they're daylighting to at this point. Versus trying to route them to another new outfall and catching an unknown amount of water and putting it into that outfall. So we would ensure that everything would remain as it is today with better. Components in it versus just just leaving it alone, I mean, if they weren't to do this development, and that is the case, a bunch of the Highland Street waters being conveyed there. At some point, that would fail and the town would have to find another solution for it. So I think this is a win-win in that if they encounter a pipe, they certainly will replace it and allow everything to remain the way it is.
If if the pipe currently goes under the road onto Duncan's property and is not functioning. At some point. And the town ends up accepting this road. Oh. With the structures that you're proposing. Then the ability for the town to. Connect that in the future is. Non-existent, right?
No, that wouldn't be the case, the. The structures are are specific to our roadway, but we're saying we would maintain and ensure that the other structures, if they exist. Would remain functional and the town could approach the property owner in the same manner that they would have to now to replace their pipe that's on the applicant's property. to replace their pipe that's on the applicant's property.
So the, the pipe that you're, that you did manage to dig up initially is not gonna be on the, on the way. It's gonna be on Duncan's property.
Correct. It's on the, it's, it's on the side slope of the road area.
To the north, then?
Uh, it would be to the west. I'll put my screen up for the benefit of the conversation.
Yeah, let's see that again.
So this was the area where the um, where the initial pipe was seen, the broken pipe. And so in theory, if the town were to ever decide that they had something here and they needed to replace it and it, it was allowed, one, if this is an accepted road, it makes it infinitely better in that the town would actually have the right to do work within the roadway versus being on private property now. Um, and two, it's, it's off to the side of the road surface by quite a bit as well.
But within the, the way?
Yes.
So it would be on, that pipe is gonna be on land that if the road is accepted by the town, would be on town land?
Correct. So the town would not have to buy an easement from a private property owner at that point.
And and what you discovered was the terminus of the pipe or just a broken section that, that continued somewhere?
Given how close it was to the surface, I would assume that it's, it's a terminus. Um, I mean, it, it was visible at the ground surface. If, if it were to continue further, I'd certainly expect it to be deeper and further underground.
Right.
The um Highland doesn't pond at that spot now, right? When they get a, a water event? I don't recall any puddles up there or anything.
I, when I've been at the site, I've never seen that. I mean, the pavement's a little bit of disrepair in some areas, but I, I don't see anything that shows to ponding or.
Have you been there other than this year?
What's up?
Have you, has he been here there other than this year? No, because it's really dry and I have seen water there over the years.
I've had the privilege of driving up and down Highland Street for the last fifteen years. And that's because it's
Oh, have you?
Yes, it's on my commute often, so. I, I have not, to, to answer your question directly though, um, until I met Mr. Baum last year, I other than chuckle at the um, the names of the farms around there, I've not really paid much attention to what's going on on his property.
So if it functions now
I, I remember.
Chances are, though, it should be fine. You're not gonna do anything in the roadway anyway, so you wouldn't be disturbing anything.
No, I mean
Your side, then you're gonna discover it when you start excavating.
And that's my point. So we're, we're calling to replace, if it, the one section that's been discovered, we're going to replace that. Um, if additional pieces of pipe or unknown pipes are discovered, those would be replaced as well. And the road by its nature, the majority of it is in fill, so we'd actually be putting more material over it, which would protect it more. Uh, there is an existing farm road there that does have heavy equipment going up and down it. So this is, in my opinion, uh, would add more protection to that. We're gonna have additional material distributing a load over whatever is there, if anything's there. We're, we're kinda making assumptions on some unknown things here.
And where your, where Amos Wheeler Road will connect to Highland, you have two catch basins you're proposing there anyways.
That's correct. So anything that is, is
On that.
At the intersection is gonna be conveyed to our system and appropriately mitigated.
Right. I think you're making it better.
I like to think that as well. I, I hope we can agree to that.
Was there any other concerns that Highway had, Tim?
Um, the um, they raised this, the uh change in the town's attitude towards streetlights and intersections with existing roads and suggested that the planning board seriously consider um the addition of streetlights as part of our requirements when there's a road that could be accepted by the town. So the, so the town isn't in a situation where it ends up putting in the streetlight at some later date. Which is, you know, you and I talked earlier that we haven't been in a situation where we've included that as a requirement, but um I think it's something going forward that we probably need to have a conversation with the energy committee and probably the select board and, and not begin to understand if indeed that's their objective. The town owns the streetlights now, whereas in the past it was uh national grid, I guess, so. You know, we've taken over that, that role and we used to um, I mean, the selectmen years ago were turning off streetlights when they got an opportunity, but now, um, I think from a safety point of view, they're looking at intersections and the addition of streetlights is something that's valuable, so.
But that's a conversation for a future date.
Um, you know, I, I feel that we're not in a position where we understand the if, if this is really a policy that the town wants to follow, and if it is, then I think we just need to get up to speed with it and include it in the language in the future.
Okay.
The, the pond that's on Mike's property currently, is the elevation at the surface of that pond higher? Do we, you don't have any idea what the surface elevation of that pond is, do you, Seth?
Just, just extrapolating our contours um and from looking across the site, it, it is probably slightly higher than uh Mr. Mr. Baum's property in most parts.
So, I mean, I think if we've got language that says you're gonna unearth that pipe as, as it exists, replace it to the degree you're talking about on each side and uh you know, put in the clean outs. Um, that accomplishes that. If you um deal with the pipe that runs alongside the, the right away to the I mean, I'd call it to this, to the south of the road, right? Yeah. When you say west of the road, I maybe southwest?
What's the difference? Southwest?
Yeah.
Left side of the road when you're driving down.
Left side of the road. So that would be the case and then
Are you driving south?
Yeah, yeah.
And then uh you know, grade, you'll just continue to meet the specs. Those are the main ingredients, I think. Waivers, you're asking for waivers on sidewalks, street trees, lights. Right?
That's it. So it, and in the past, um, the light waiver has been something that is kind of viewed as a benefit to the butters and that they don't wanna see streetlights. I, I understand if you're considering lights at the intersection. Um, again, this is, well, it is a subdivision road. The um, intensity of development on the site is extremely low. And they're, they're essentially doing this so they can create frontage so the family can have the opportunity to stay on the property. So I, I'm sure if you wanted a streetlight, they'd be happy to do that. Um. It's just one that isn't much more than the use of a regular driveway, though.
Well, maybe the appropriate thing to do is to um suggest that in, in consultation with the selectman and the highway department and the the, the determination as to whether a streetlight is added is uh to be determined. How's that?
That would be fine. They, yeah, they, they'd like to, ideally, um, they'd like the board to act favorably on the proposal so that they can move forward with permitting with other boards and um planning for other things. So if that's something that the town feels and going forward that they're going to implement on subdivision, we'll certainly take note and I, I'm sure they'd be happy to work with you on that.
All right. So we'll check with those other boards and to see if, if this indeed is the direction they wanna go, then you can be the groundbreaking um subdivision that
Yeah, yeah. Amos Wheeler Road will also be known as Electric Avenue or
Yep, yep. Good.
Well, if there are any questions, we respectfully ask the board, um, if they consider closing the hearing.
Do any of the members of the board have any further questions or insights or comments?
We do have an audience member with the hand up. When, yep.
Bull, it seems to be good. Okay, can you elevate the person with their hand up, please?
I can. It is the abutter, Mike Mitchell.
Okay.
Mr. Mi-
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you. Um, Tim just made a comment that this could be the groundbreaking subdivision around streetlights. Um, if it would just go on the record that uh Mike Mitchell be a butter would rather not see the streetlights.
Yeah, and I, I think we heard, hear that, but I think it's gonna be a decision that the selectmen and the highway department and the energy committee are probably gonna make based on what they wanna see going forward, because what traditionally begins to happen is that people that live on these, not necessarily the one um initially lived there, begin to say, I, I want a streetlight at the intersection with the road that we're connecting with because I don't feel safe turning out onto the road, you know, people we can't see, so. Um, if the town's gonna accept the road, then uh you know, i- if in the town's determination, it's wise to go ahead and do that at the expense of the developer rather than the town. I think that's something we may very well um do.
I, I can understand how the town would wanna save money. I, my uh, I, I think my feeling is still the same that I'd rather not see a streetlight there. It's nice having the farm as it is without a, a beacon sitting there at the intersection. And when I think about it, if it's just gonna be Duncan, pretty much Duncan and his family for the next fifty years, um, I would hope that the town would then address this fifty years from now. I, I just don't see the need for a streetlight there. The, so that's one item. The other item is on the um um, Tim, you were talking about across the street uh that there is a um a drain um over by Elsie Wheeler's by her property. Seth, I know you drive uh past there, but actually that ponds up right at uh, if you look at Elsie Wheeler's driveway to the left-hand side of Elsie Wheeler's driveway, that ponds up all the time, particularly in the winter time. So, you know, it's, it's not something you would probably notice when I plow her driveway. I know this is all the time. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, maybe Janet, maybe it was you that mentioned it. Yeah, I see, I've seen it for years and so I know you've been driving there for fifteen years, but I've seen it now, you know, going on forty-five years. So that's something that I would hope that you, I'm sorry.
Eighty years. I've seen
Janet, you got me beat. But uh it does pond up and uh, and it's not something that's obvious unless you're driving a tractor and you miss it and you go into it. So um, that would be, uh, back to Tim, that would be something that I would be uh concerned about that I think the town should look into. Then, Tim, back to your question, is the pond on Mike's property is the elevation higher? It is higher and I'm guessing it's probably about maybe three feet from the drain where the, the inflow at my pond down to the bottom of the road, right over the borderline there in that right away. I'm guessing it's about a, maybe a, maybe a three-foot drop. And I, let me just check my notes. I, I think that, there may be one other item. If we just give me a chance, it's the flip back. Oh, um, back on the new wells, um, I think, Tom, you were the one that it's uh said about uh the new wells and the new, a create newly created lots would be um up to spec in terms of uh the border health setback requirements. I'm still back on Mike Mitchell's well. Um, whi- which is the reverse situation. Usually you have a road and then somebody wants to put in a well and that's when the setbacks apply. Um, when I spoke to Bill Brookings, he said they don't really have the jurisdiction, so they don't do anything with roads. But um, you know, I'm suggesting that the town look into that because I think that is, that could be a, a future point of contention where does it, does it apply in the reverse? So in this situation, we have a new road going in to alongside of an existing uh, you know, fifteen feet from uh that road is my well. Um, in, when Bill and I were talking, Brookings and I were, we're talking, he said typically you have uh a road, an existing road, and then you want somebody to put in a well. If the well is too close, then that's when the setbacks, current setbacks uh set in basically apply. He said he's not certain if it applies in the reverse or not. Uh, I'm not a lawyer, but I know the town has counsel and I would think it might be wise to at least get a reading on that. So, Tom, I do appreciate your, your reply about the new wells. That was something I hadn't even thought about. Uh, but that makes perfect sense that the new wells on the new properties would meet existing town requirements. But I'm back on Mike Mitchell's well and uh my well is, you know, twelve, fifteen feet from that property line. So do the setbacks exist? Um, do they apply in the reverse? And I think that's all I have. The, the streetlights, Elsie Wheeler's pounding at that uh right by that drain. The elevation slightly higher at Mike's pond drops very slightly over to Duncan's. And this last item about uh, do setbacks apply in the reverse?
Do you have any, any insight on that, Seth?
Yeah, well, we've, we've spoken about the butters well at length, so that, again, the drainage from our development is actually being captured and sent away from the butters well, which is a rather marked improvement over existing conditions in that there's an existing farm road with equipment using it that is essentially um going right past that area. Now, the town has well setbacks that say that a well needs to be fifty feet from a property line. But to be clear, we're, we're not making a new property line in this section to accommodate this road. In fact, it's the opposite. The, the road is within a right of way. The town requires a sixty-foot wide right of way. Um, and our road, actual road pavement surface needs to be centered in that right of way. So by default, our road needs to be offset from the edge of our own lot lines. So if somebody put a well in too close to their lot line, it wouldn't preclude an applicant from doing construction on their property. That, that just trying to run it in the opposite scenario, I don't see how that makes sense, especially in a case like this where we're going to collect the drainage and send it in the opposite direction of the well. So I hope that helps clarify that.
It's an existing condition.
Correct.
And if it was a driveway, not a road, it really, this conversation probably wouldn't really be And if it was a driveway, not a road, it really this conversation probably wouldn't really be being had.
Yeah, I mean, there there is a driveway there now.
Right.
Is that a permitted driveway? Is there a town permit allowing that driveway? I mean, I I used to hate that field and Duncan put in that driveway, what maybe three, four years, five years ago.
Driveway. I I think the the point being is that the drainage from the roadway is not going to impact well. It's going to go in the complete opposite direction. And the well is entirely on applicant's private property and even offset from his own property lines.
But Seth, you had talked about this being existing driveway. That driveway is recent. Does let let me ask the planning board because I I just don't know anything about this. Is there a requirement for anyone to take out a permit for driveway? Is that or is there no requirement?
An applicant would have to make a an application for a curb cut and that curb cut will go before the select board.
For for a driveway.
For a curb cut, yeah, for a driveway.
We I don't understand. What happens if there's no curb cut? Well, if I want to put another driveway on my property, do I have to actually check with the the town, the planning board or the and get permission for a driveway?
You'd have to get permission for a driveway. You'd have to fill out an application for a driveway permit or a curb cut and go to the select board. And they would probably consult with the highway department to see if there was any issues or maybe even public safety for sightlines.
Oh, that's interesting. So on this particular driveway that Seth is referring to. When was that driveway permit issued?
I have no idea.
Well, Seth, was the driveway permission issue?
If I can address that to the board. The driveway was existing at the beginning of our work on the property. It it wouldn't be regular for us to investigate the history of it, especially when we're replacing it and putting new access to the site with improved stormwater controls on it. I think the question is irrelevant to this process with all due respect.
Well, only Seth, only because you keep referring to it as an existing driveway. If it's not a permitted driveway, then why would you? And I understand you came into the project that was existing when you came on the on the property. But do we follow the does does the town follow its own rules or do you have, you know, just make, you know, what happens? Now, if you have a driveway permit processed and that somebody doesn't follow it and then they want to make that that driveway permit turn into a road, you would just say, okay.
No, the two are are not compatible. The driveway permit is just through the select board like Tom suggested and that driveway, if it's there illegally or whatever, is going to cease to exist. So the planning board is simply looking at the issue of whether the road complies with the subdivision control law. And that's what we're reviewing now. The fact that the driveway is going to be eliminated. You know, I understand what you're trying to suggest, but it it's not going to impact the decision that the planning board has to make in regard to a new proposal for a subdivision road. And I agree. I mean, you know, Seth refers to it as an existing driveway, but that's you know, probably it might very well not be the 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 case, but that's beside the point for us tonight anyway. Seth, the 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 right away is 60 feet, the 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 60 feet goes right up to the property line with Mike.
No, there's there's actually a independent strip, a parcel B containing about 1100 square feet of land that provides an additional buffer between the butters property.
What's what's the width of that?
It's it's a regular shape because of the radius of the road. It is roughly providing about 10 feet in some areas.
So if if the if the if the right away is 60 and you're centering the road in this in the midst of that and it's 20, then you're going to end up with 20 feet of of distance from the paved surface to the this sliver of land that's got another 10 feet and then we're talking 15 feet to Mike's well. So basically, we're talking about 10, 20, 30, 45 feet.
Correct. And I'll I'll point out that the the state requires wells to be 15 feet from a right away.
Right. So you know, the fact that we're 45 feet with the pavement. Which and then you're like you're suggesting you're you're adding all these controls in terms of the flow of any runoff. So it's captured and not going to move toward Mike's property. He's, you know, you could argue that in in the best of situations. Mike's well might be five feet further from the from the surface of the roadway, but the fact that we're capturing all this is to everybody's benefit, it seems so.
May I say one other thing? Oh, hello.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Back to the conversation around lights and trees and sidewalks. I'd just like to go on record to say that I would prefer not to see sidewalks. As I already said, I kind of agree with Seth. I wouldn't agree. I wouldn't like to see lights for that road. Think it's an overkill. And I also wouldn't want to see sidewalks. So if you just make noted after the record. I'd appreciate it.
Okay, presently, they've asked for relief from sidewalks, tree trees and streetlights.
Yeah, I would. I would support all three of those.
Carolyn, does anybody else in the audience have a hand up to or a comment or a question?
I'll put my hand down or.
Great. I'm going to put you back in the way in the audience.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike.
And no, nobody else has their hand up.
Okay, if none of the other board members have any comments or questions, then at this point I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the hearing at this point in time. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask you to vote on closing the hearing. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Janet Campbell.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Thank you. The hearing is closed. So, um, Tim, you were working on a Britain decision for the.
Yeah. So what I'll do is polish that up and I'll send it to everybody on the board and I'll send it to Seth as well because I I think we've done that in the past and that way. If if we misinterpret something, then we we can get that straightened away before we meet again. So.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes it easier for all of us if if you get a chance to chime in if you see something that's consistent with what you think we've said. And the nice thing is that although Jay takes wonderful notes, the fact that we're taping these means we can look and see what we actually agreed and said, so that helps.
And then will there be a Mylar created Seth that will need to sign?
Yeah, so I will have the applicant or his contractor bring a Mylar that is a mirror image of everything that you've been sent previously.
Okay. With all of the stuff that's been captured and agreed to.
Correct. So I with the exception of the last plan I mailed you, I've been mailing you a full set on each time. I'll make sure that everyone has the current dates. Would you like that prior?
Mailing them or emailing them?
I'll email you a digital copy of them and then I will have the should the Mylars be delivered to Town Hall or we can just wait until the board has the ability?
Wait one more meeting because then after that, if we if it's good, then we can hand deliver it around.
That that's totally fine.
Yeah, I just don't want to get it. Me and going to the town to get the mail is not a consistent thing. I do my best. Okay.
Get that in the in the near future.
The the you should get the the Tim's right up before our next meeting.
Great. And may I ask when your next meeting is?
Yes, you may. It is June.
Ninth.
Ninth or eighth?
No, eighth.
June eighth, yeah.
Yeah, June eighth.
Okay, then we will.
On the agenda or would you want to be on the agenda or you just want to check in?
I I do know I have another commitment that evening. So if everything looks good with the decision and the applicant says he's okay with it, if it's all right with you, I'll I'll let you know that in writing. And at that point, with the hearing closed, I really can't contribute much more anyways.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are you done with me for the evening? I'd be happy to. I I want to go on Tom's boat. Well, see you in the near future. Be well.
Good night, Seth.
Fantastic. So the that was all the heavy hitters on the agenda. So any timely discussions for any items that anybody wants to chat about, we can bring up now. Any updates from anything in the world of are we just recovering from town meeting, town elections? Some of us more than others.
There's
felt so bad.
There's interest. There's interest on a couple of people I've talked to recently about the workforce housing issue. So if if it were something that we we wanted to pursue. Either I don't know. I mean, we I think we talked about it as an overlay, but
Right. That's my inclination was we're going to do this as an overlay.
Yeah, and Chris Seni's son put together some architectural drawings and they had some language. Which we could resurrect and look at some more. We could call it the Ron Vavriska Memorial.
Oh, not memorial yet.
Oh, the district. But if if we, I mean, I was trying to think of where where we head now. What have we got on our docket that's new and inspiring and that's the the one thing that we danced around in the past, but if we still have an appetite for that, I guess we have some people that have said to me interested in identifying a piece of land and trying to pursue it as a guinea pig, you know.
Down on the law.
What, Janet?
She froze now. Internet sketchy over by you guys tonight.
Am I having trouble too?
Yeah.
Keep saying it's unstable. I don't take it personally.
And you say, don't talk to me that way, computer.
Show you unstable. I I I think that would be something that we could, you know, get our hands on and, you know, kick around a little bit.
I would love to do something like that.
Yeah.
The the housing production plan has to be redone in 2022. The open space plan is finalized, so you've got some clearance on that for a while.
Yep.
You know, in terms of projects, it seems as though this is something that probably is of as much interest to us as anything. The river bridge is in in limbo right now. Obviously, they'll come back after they've continued to work on some negotiations with the town to perhaps make some proposals to the fall town meeting.
Drive through.
Hey, fifth time's a charm.
Well, you didn't technically do it this time, so.
No, we did vote on it this time. This is the only item they didn't pass over. It's the only one they didn't pass over.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right.
Yep.
It lost. I wrote it down.
Yeah, I lost big time. All right.
Yeah, I think 25 people voted for it. Yeah.
Now, that was a citizen's petition, so they cannot bring a citizen's petition back for two years, right?
Right.
Yep. So we don't see it for a little bit.
Yeah.
Unless they weasel up and go into supporting something.
No, no.
Well, yeah, I Yeah, I don't I if it was included as some part of a big package that came to town meeting with changes to the zoning bylaw and the development agreement that the select board and the finance committee and, you know, on and on, we're all endorsing, I suppose. That we might very well say, okay, include it as part of a package and see what happens, but
You'd have to be a pretty damn big jury.
I would think it would have to be.
Yeah, and I don't think they have. I don't think they have enough carrot down there.
I don't think that it would enhance the proposal to include it, given its monstrous defeat this time, so.
And each time, I mean, each time it's the it it's been resounding.
Right. It loses by more every time.
Right.
It's just the same way as our cluster zoning lost by more every time we brought it up.
Well, I think if they if they brought something forward that was like anything like they first proposed, one iota. They might get it, but they haven't.
So on to the cluster zoning for a minute, though. What is the difference between any cluster zoning proposal and what's happening at Highland Ridge right now?
Highland Ridge or or Sawyer Hill LLC or any 40B.
What what it well, and Highland Ridge isn't even a 40B.
No, there is. You know, any of those have density greater than what we were proposing with our cluster.
Right.
Cluster got annihilated.
Right.
We did it three times.
Can we rebrand it?
Well, I think the workforce housing may very well be.
Might change things.
It I mean, that's going to be a cluster. It's just going to be a
I was I wasn't going to say it, Janet.
You people are terrible.
It's all Janet. No, it isn't.
It's the age.
Tom and I didn't get that at all until you made your comment. We had no clue. But that gives us that mid range housing that I think we feel we want to address and and captures the whole cluster probably isn't the right word, but you know.
There's probably more appetite now in some of the more ferocious. Voracious opponents, let me say, um are no longer on this planet, so.
Right, yeah.
Right, and I I think when we compare it to, again, some of the other developments that have been allowed.
Yeah.
Um that are gonna sell for significantly more and close out more people. Then the more local people than it will allow in.
Right, but if you deal with like Sawyer Hill or not so much the over forty uh over fifty-fives. Um it was a, you know, um an affordable component to it, so. It was more of a, you know, okay, we might as well go along with this cuz they're gonna ram it down our throats anyway, so.
Right.
Um we might as well have a say if we.
Yeah.
Do it as a as a, you know, a a local initiative or something along those lines.
Right.
Um the over fifty-five, I think they felt that there was a a um. An appetite because there's not a huge impact to schools or anything like that, so and they typically tend to be a little bit more. Um. You know, the the property values are pretty damn good and the tax bases are pretty damn good, so it's a win.
Um right, but then everybody complains that their kids can't afford to live in town.
Right, exactly, yeah.
You know. And that the taxes are too high.
Yeah.
I mean, it it's, you know, I I love that argument, but you know, everybody's taxes are too high, right? So if you compare us to the other towns surrounding us.
Right.
Our taxes aren't all that bad.
No, they're not.
Right.
No. So do you do you think there would be a willingness to vote in favor of another over fifty-five?
Right, I think Highland Ridge may have burned that bridge for the town.
Yeah.
But I think we can dare very much point to the low impact of the apartments on the schools.
Yeah.
As um, you know, one thing to look at.
Right.
Oh.
And there's capacity in the school system, so it's not like you couldn't absorb a few.
Right.
You know, and you're not gonna see a huge, you know, subdivision coming in. There's not enough land. You know, enough par- enough parcel. To drop fifty students, a hundred students or whatever on it.
Right.
So.
Yeah, when we, when we were looking at the uh. The bylaw that allowed. Um solar to go into parcels that were fifty acres or greater.
Yeah.
That were in the residential zone, there were only nine parcels.
Right.
So. Um. You know, the likelihood of, like you say, there being a big subdivision with. Multiple, multiple houses is pretty slim.
Yeah, pretty slim.
Right.
Yeah, and and you know, maybe with workforce housing, if they're. You know, small, not small, but you know, reasonably sized housing, you might only get one. Or possibly one and a half kids per dwelling, so.
Right.
You know, the numbers will be slow to be the smaller the year.
Right, and I'm sure there would be entry level housing.
The starter homes.
Yeah.
From what what we saw from the Senneys, they were definitely starter homes, I think they were only like fifteen hundred square feet.
I think they were a thousand square feet.
They may have been a thousand square.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're building.
I mean, the New York Times.
We're building.
New York Times yesterday was talking about population and the the downturn in worldwide population that really begins to alarm some people. Um not just here, but everywhere, so.
Yeah.
There's something going on.
Growth control.
We're building micro units.
Part of it.
Micro units.
Micro units and they are four around four hundred and fifty square feet.
Holy crap.
And they're apartments. Wow, that's New York City stuff.
Well.
That's closet.
I was in the in the mock-up one and uh there was four of us in there and I was claustrophobic.
Wow, yeah.
There's a there there's a a living area, a small kitchen, um a bed that's built into the wall. And a a bathroom with a shower.
Where was this?
The building's gonna be down near um Fenway Park on Wilson Street.
Yeah.
Nineteen stories.
So how many units total?
There's like three hundred and ninety, something like that.
Well, I mean, that suits the need of a certain niche, you know, so.
Yeah, and there are, there are people who can live that way. I personally could not live in a beehive.
No, I couldn't either, but what they're doing is they're marketing them towards um people that are doing their graduate work and stuff like that. And researchers and what have you that are mostly in the lab anyways, and they just use it to flop and fall asleep.
Right. Make some ramen, go back to work. Yep.
Yeah, the nicest thing is is they have a like a beautiful bike storage thing that everybody's all excited about.
That's awesome.
I know.
Yeah, for six months out of the year.
Small, they are really, you know, it's like being in a boat, you know, in a cabin of a boat.
Yeah.
But you got fresh air there.
Well, these these units have operable windows, so yeah, you're gonna have.
They have a window.
You can jump when it gets too much.
I can't jump, no, they only open about four inches.
See, for me, that that would be the 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 cl- clincher of why I could never live there. I, but yeah.
There's a buzz, you know, if you needed a place to stay and you only had so much money to spend, then it might look pretty good.
Right, right, yeah, it's an affordable way to be downtown.
But it's the same same principle, you know, it it not four hundred square feet, but the principle is if you need a place to. Live and you need to be in town, then maybe a thousand square feet or whatever is.
Yeah.
Follow.
But a bigger lot than the Senneys we're talking about with better parking.
Right.
And and a yard and, yeah.
Well, I mean, you can do, we could get clever and then, you know, i- i- if the yards are small, have a common space. That's shared by the community.
Right.
You know, you're gonna have to do, you know, cluster septic or common septic or something like that because it won't support it. And then you you need to figure out whether you have a common water supply or the individual wells, you know, and that. Common model supply is, that's a two-year process, probably more now with COVID in this in the in the state.
Well, you mean permitting?
When when Mark tried to get um shared wells and shared septic for his. Um piece there on South Common, the state said no more.
Really, okay.
No more here in town?
He no, it just, he'd have to have a public water supply rather than these share systems, and so. He ended up going with individual wells and septic for each 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 unit.
Right.
Wow.
And.
So they got spaghetti like lots that, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I was at the ZBA meeting when they were talking about that. So, but individual.
I changed this. Go ahead.
Well, so well, the two things, so first of all, um you guys remember the picture I showed you where my sister lives? It was like a year ago, you know, so it it basically, let's say it's a twenty acre lot. The shared well and shared septic are in the middle, but it's all wooded. And the houses are so are spaced out around it in a way that you would never know that they were on shared anything. So it doesn't feel like a cluster development, it doesn't look like a cluster development. But it has that component of shared utilities.
So it's like a wagon wheel?
Kinda, yeah. But it it feels more, I mean, she lives in Vermont, it feels like. A s- a street in Vermont, you know, all of the houses are spaced out. Um you would never, it looks nothing like anything, any of the. Um over fifty-fives that we have.
So was the zoning set up specifically to allow that?
I don't know, I could find out more details about it.
Yeah, you just can't come in here like this.
The complication of that is is that the the lot being so big is going to have such an expense that. You may find that it's gonna be harder to do here.
It and that could be, um.
You know, well, we were talking, we were talking, you know, moving them closer together, so more like the co-housing where. There was a a a an open space component. Um but the 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 housing, the dwelling units themselves were kind of close together and more of a neighborhood type of feel.
Right, but it wasn't the pushback about the proposals always. That kind of density. That that's not Berlin.
Certainly, no, there there was different, different times we ran this up the flagpole, we got different, you know.
Pushback.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Didn't you think the thing that scared people the most was wells failing and.
Yep.
Um and the town having to come in and take responsibility for supplying water and all that, that was. Oh, that was the.
That was the big one, yeah.
Right up at town meeting, yeah.
How often do wells fail?
It was just that, you know, the density was gonna be such with a cluster project that the those individual wells were not gonna be. Sustainable. The long run and something would go wrong and then the town would be responsible for coming up with some sort of public water supply at immense cost, so. When when that got floated, you know, people began to panic and uh the it went, that was one time anyway, it went down the drain pretty.
That sounds like a. Oh, never mind.
Yeah.
Well, never mind. Uh, okay, so then you're gonna change the subject.
I I want to talk to you sometime about um the acquisition of open space.
Okay.
Because. I mean, you've got a couple pieces on your target and I'm wondering. Where you stand on those and. That's not a public conversation, probably.
Correct.
I'd like to chat.
Right, I mean, if we want to do it as the planning board, we could go into executive session.
Is that a reason?
I don't think it's reasonable.
Yeah, I may not qualify, we're not talking about the.
Oh, and we're not, yeah, we're not talking about money.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't think we'd get away with it. We'll have to do it surreptitiously.
Well, we can do it at uh um the cocktail hour of Ron's party.
That's right.
We will publish it as a open meeting.
Right.
Gathering amongst friends.
Careful, the open meeting police will be after you. The open meeting police will be after you.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah, um you know what, I make a motion to officially close our meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion about closing the meeting? Seeing none, I will ask you to vote. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Janet Campbell.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye.